We're just gonna have to start changing our closed session, that's just all that is to it. Um, but we were very, very busy doing lots of, lots of work. So, we are gonna go ahead and get started with our open session. And you know me, I do not mess around, we're gonna make it as quick as possible. So, I will call the meeting to order, welcome everyone, do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
I move that the school board haven't been in closed sessions pursuant to a proper motion come out of closed session.
Wait, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next up is certification of our closed session, do we have a certification?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas, section twenty-two point two-three-seven-twelve D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformly with the Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each, each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, hearing none, that motion carries, next up, we have motions from closed session, we've got a couple of items. Um, first up, we have personnel, if my screen will behave. Um, so first up, we have the regular personnel agenda, um, and we have some adjustments to that, so we have the personnel agenda with the um, adjustment to the date on number five and the addition of number six, do we have a motion in regards to that?
I so move.
To approve?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the personnel agenda with the adjustment to the date on number five and the addition of number six, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next up, we have the personnel addendum, do we have a motion in regards to the personnel addendum?
I move to accept the personnel addendum as presented.
We have a motion to accept the personnel addendum, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Uh, Ms. Burke-Halter, we need a motion on the non-resident, correct? I see Ms. Moore going yes, sorry. Um, do we have a motion in regards to the non-resident's application?
I move to not accept the application for the non-resident enrollment.
We have a motion, um, to not accept the non-resident enrollment application, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Alright, next up is the approval of the agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next up, will be our public hearing on our fiscal year twenty-three budget. Mr. Ryder is joining us remotely, Mr. Ryder, if you would like to proceed.
Uh, do you need to thank you? Jared Phillips? I can't see anybody by the ceiling, so I assume you're all there. Um, so okay, the twenty-twenty-three budget is the, um, so this is the, um, the legality of where the budget for the Lewis's creation, uh, in the Code of Virginia. Uh, so I would create this every year, this, uh, will be, uh, submitted to the city council on March fourteenth. Um, I really don't take it first from the first of the city council meeting. And then, after the city adapts their budget, the school division adapts theirs. Alright, so there are, there are only three really basic, three sources of revenue. Uh, we have local revenue that the city allocates to us. And, um, we have a few grants in there, but the line share is the local allocation for the city. And, uh, the, I requested our joint session, December, uh, same al- same dollars as before as last year, which is this year. Uh, plus a two-hundred thousand dollar age back match, which is a federal grant. And then, um, a teacher salary scale increase in order to be on par with the support of the school. Um, the state revenue, I have used the governor's introduced budget, uh, with the state's nine-hundred-and-thirty-four eighty thousand, which is based on the fall uh, student record collection. And then the federal is, uh, my best estimate at this time of the grant carry orders and the, uh, grants that would be reviewed. The estimate. And that's what we'll, that's what we'll see, and then the expense assumptions, um, I reset the all the salary benefits to be very close to what they were, um, projected to be right results for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Um, and then, because this year we have to change our budget for a couple of large items that I don't think will recur next year, so I have to pull it right back out later next year. And then the operations and maintenance line has been increased to cover, um, anticipated repairs, repairs that are so numerous that they, you know, they're listed off here. Um, the last needs. So, um, so the all-important funds ten is the first, uh, income statement budget that will stay in this slide. Uh, I, I listed the twenty-twenty-one budget and twenty-twenty-one action, so the first two columns of last year. It's history, it's kind of give you a feel for what's going on, and, uh, the budget for this year. And the budget this year includes any amendments that we have, you know, made since the start of the year. And then, um, you know, my projected, uh, results for this year, so you can see. So, right to the left of the blue line is the projection, I think we're gonna end up this year. Um, the state revenue is nine million and, but, you know, I had to take out that hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar security grant that I don't think will be next year. If it does, does, but I don't think, so, so the eight million, eight thirty-seven is the state account we're gonna write now, another thirty-four million. Uh, the, uh, the city appropriation, four point eight million, we add in two-hundred and three fifty-five, it gives you to the five million, three fifty-five. And then the local other, uh, that's just what most of that seventy thousand dollars is, uh, which is power TC. Where we compound this, it's listed as local. And, uh, so it goes from two-twenty-one down to seven because I have the hundred point nine thousand dollar and the grant that we received this year, that's one thousand dollar justice grant. And actually the expenses, um, for the, you know, explanation, or the word I got, the numbers, you know, most of it's based on this year, plus or minus what, you know, large items that I had to add or deduct, maybe if they want to take. So, uh, I think about fourteen point two two million for operating budget. The rest of it, fourteen point two percent. Uh, the next slide are the exclusive funds just to, for our school division, they have nothing to do with the city. The city doesn't consume these, they throw state funding or tax funding. Um, the textbook fund, um, you know, we, we are supposed to be having a deficit this year because we're just kind of like a gap, very fun getting to spend down, cash balance. That's why you see a negative hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar operating surplus deficit. Um, but then next year, uh, you know, it comes straight out of the calculator, um, seventy thousand, nine ninety-two. And then, um, seventy, and a little bit of interesting number, there's seventy-one thousand in and seventy-one thousand dollars out. Um, cafeteria, kind of the same thing, you have to have a balanced budget, so, um, you know, it'll be, uh, eight eighty-four in and about eight eighty-four out. Again, the projection for this year, I'm not sure what's cut off. Oh, um, sorry about that, um, so the eight ninety, because we all have to lose math, the eight ninety minus the nine fifty-one is what the true value is deficit. And, uh, we're supposed to have a deficit because the cash balance is high in, in the nutrition line. Totally expected, and, uh, sorry, I didn't hear that. But the green shade, everything to the right, the blue line is the, is the Russian proposed budget. Correct. And so, um, again, like the grants, you know, the left of the blue line, you gotta, or whatever you break, whatever. It's in reverse, whatever you spend will come in. So you start down with expenditures, and you spend the money and then you get to reimburse them. And one thing I need to include is, and, um, ensuring everything, everything we snapped right into the balance, but what, what we spent comes back to us. And so next year, um, you know, we're anticipating about six point nine million dollars on outdoor versus two point, four point eight million. And, uh, you can see it's right there on the operations and maintenance other line, where we do the mugs and bathrooms and stuff like that. Move those fiscal year twenty-three. And so the, uh, overall, um, the overall statement on the, uh, on the, um, the budget statement will be, uh, about nineteen point eight eight seven for this year. Uh, we'll end up, we'll end up about twenty-two next year, um, with a big difference there in the grants. And, uh, and with the whole city appropriation. And then, you know, certain work comes in and has to go out, and so they're, they're being presented in a balanced question. Does anybody have any questions at this point?
Any questions for Mr. Ryder at this juncture, this is just looking at, at this point, the regular budget request for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three? Then, Mr. Ryder, one question for you in regards to the grants, um, looking at the, um, anticipated amount within the grant side. Some of that is, of course, excluding what we are earmarking to spend in the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year out of the ESER grant, correct? Because doesn't, one of those carries through twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, correct?
It does, um, but the, but we do, we, what we do is we do budget for full grants.
Okay.
Um, it's, I need to pull out a technicality, but we, here's what we want, our reference to be balanced with Omega. Omega is the software that we need to read, and that thing, that software there keeps track of a full grant, even though it's multi-year full grant, and so we, when we have the balance, we suppose, it's just not even us, not the board members here. As if, well, it's just a little, you're gonna spend a half year, it's as low, then you're not gonna be able to do it. So yes, uh, this bill is the, this, this figure is, is the multi-year numbers, so not all of that is spent.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, because, um, let's see, June thirty, twenty-twenty-three. Yeah, and then it goes to September twenty-twenty-four, where it's April, this year, and stuff like that, so. So yeah, this, this does stand, this figures does, some of these figures are multi-year figures, uh, just for basically the essence.
Any other questions on our proposed regular budget for twenty-twenty-three? Alright, Mr. Ryder, I think you're good to proceed.
Okay, so this is, uh, I don't know, I don't know what the history of, of Franklin City Public Schools. The first time that I ever, um, presented a capital budget as a separate item for the city to consider. Uh, and, and it really does go very, very well with what the city has asked for in the past. Um, so when we read these cities, hundred, thirty, hundred and sixty-eight gapper. They decide there, um, they, you know, statements about what is their relationship with the school division with the city. And so the next, on the next, so I took from the very last gapper that we did, right in the opening pages, page fifteen of the gapper, um, that we are a component unit, uh, apparently it does real, the government authority is also a component, so us and that. And then, we're both component units in the city. Um, and so, uh, right in the middle of this paragraph, it says, for Franklin City Public Schools, the city must provide all capital improvement funds. Knet and school projects will provide a significant amount of operating funds required, but not provided by state. So, and point, you know, the city council authority is limited to appoint local school, school board members and appropriating funds. And the funds that they were appropriating is our operating budget, which you saw, and capital improvement funds. So in order for the city to kind of throw in, uh, what is it we need to allocate capital improvements? This is why we're actually submitting a capital budget. This capital budget is, is for the city to consider, it's not something that we have the money to spend. It's in order for the city to provide our all capital improvement funds. So on the next slide, all I did was take that sentence and kind of highlight it, because it was that's S, why that's the whole emphasis on this whole presentation, the city must provide all capital improvement. That's great, because, because line four, local school boards do not get tax aid or foundation authority. We cannot raise the money ourselves, we must go out and see the people. So, in order for, you know, to do that, um, so the, yeah, so the operating budget, what's different, the operating budget is, uh, the salaries and benefits to school survives, education, nutrition. Um, so because the school, the city's responsibility is, is to have debt, debt and correct capital expenditures. Um, we had to, like, we created this capital budget just for that to be considered. And so, what it is though, on the next slide, this is not the whole capital budget that you see this presented in the past. Uh, even I, Dr. Sterling, and even the finance, we have, have looked at, you know, we really need just the most important stuff. Um, we just need the urgent repairs to be paid. And so we, you know, we kind of run around in circles here because some of these things were, you know, um, like the first time, the working repair, we had an original estimate of two-hundred thousand dollars, it's a top priority. Uh, when we got a working expert in and he gave us his opinion, uh, it turned in nine-hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So we just, you know, there's no way we can pay for that, or our operating funds. Our operating funds, you know, utilities, a few repairs here and there, but nothing like a major capital, uh, you know, level such as this, and this is why the city needs to, you know, pay for the capital improvement, you know, anywhere, all to be there. So this is the, the top items that, you know, are of most urgent need. Um, I enjoy your attention, so all we have is we have our combined investment, uh, in that middle there. And then the SR three available dollars. So, so the, the first item, the worker placement, parking lot, uh, breathing ways, which is a security issue with the community part of education. Um, none of those things can be allowed use for SR three funds. That's why there's no SR three funds, you know, helping. The fourth item about, after the models refurbished, that was clearly a SR three allowable use. And my original estimate of six hundred thousand dollars was based on the SP Morton there. And again, the whole supply chain issues and, I think they were surely just, six hundred has turned to about eight hundred and thirty-seven. So that is priced, uh, both of our, our grass, um, we can cover six. SR three can cover six hundred thousand dollars, that eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, but we were required to do the local city to, to accomplish what we need to three seven. And so that's why there's four lines there, uh, when you add those up, there should be two hundred, two hundred and four, that's, uh, four nine. Those are the capital expenditures we put in the SR three fund. So, uh, JP King bathrooms, uh, originally five to four hundred, even five seventy-four. Um, actually, I had allocated five hundred of those, so about seventy-four thousand dollars short on that project. So we can't even start it until we get funding. So this is the, the capital budget that we, uh, present, who are now presenting to the city. We're presenting for the first time, presenting to the operating budget and the capital budget. And, uh, and so, uh, on the next slide now, uh, where do we go from here, so the important dates of this, the capital budget and the operating budget uh, will be presented at the city manager on March fourteenth. Um, a couple weeks later, we have our second joint session with the city council, the city board. It's all that, and forth of us, I guess, and then the city will, on April twenty-fifth, uh, the city will consider operating, the capital ones that are regularly, on April twenty-fifth. Uh, very shortly thereafter, on May ninth, the city announced their budget for next year. And when they come back, and that line, I, for us, is a lot different than their budget, that blocks the school division's funding, so about a week. About ten days later, I will be, uh, we will be at that point.
In that baseline.
May nineteenth. So, um, so this is, uh, you know, this is kind of, you know, we've never done this before, but, uh, so I'll be presenting to the city manager with two questions. So does anybody have any questions on that?
So let's, let's take the capital, um, improvement budget, and then we'll look at overall. So any questions, comments, discussion for the board or for Mr. Ryder in regards to the capital improvement budget presentation?
It's not a question, I think that's a, a great idea to present that to the city because I was asked to go with a council, my councilperson to look at the bathrooms at, um, Franklin High School a couple of weeks ago. So to see it in writing and know the reason that it hasn't happened, that's, that's helpful and beneficial. And, um, just, uh, seeing it in writing that the city does have a part, uh, in us getting all of this done.
And, and some of these are quite pressing, um, when we look at them, for instance, the, the roof repairs, um, there's several spots that the roofs are leaking, um, to the point that this is starting to cause some structural issues. Um, those of us that have been on the board for a while, we know that SP Morton gets a fresh coat of paint quite frequently inside the building, and we just had it painted, and the paint's not adhering to the wall. And so, you know, we reached out to the contractor, we're like, why is this not sticking? Did you not prime? And they were like, no, we did our job and did some looking, and the moisture content is too high within the concrete and the brick to where some of the, um, water is starting to fail. So, you know, and when you have water coming in, it's one thing to put a bucket underneath it to catch it, but everything that you're not catching, what impact, what ripple effect is that having into the actual structural integrity of the building itself?
Right.
So, the, the roofs are, are, are a big, um, concern.
Alright, uh, uh, you know, on that particular structure, are there some parts worse than others?
Yes, there are some parts in both the, the high school and at SP Morton that are worse than others. And they, and that is something Mr. Teague, um, because when we looked at, in our finance committee, when we looked at this preliminary presentation on the capital improvement budget, Mr. Teague was part of that conversation so that we understood what we were looking at. And that was one of the things that he did indicate, is that there are areas that are worse than others that, yes, we are looking at patching what we can, but it really, the whole thing, it needs to be replaced.
Okay, because I was gonna comment, I, I appreciate the, um, putting the priority, the column with the priorities, so I didn't know if because of the unexpected increase cost for the roof, if part of it could be done, if there's more sections that are more pressing need than others.
Absolutely, and then like looking at the breezeways, for instance, you know, that's a, that's a VDOE security concern. So, you know, there are some things that by prioritization, we, we really need to focus on because of things like that. Um, the bathrooms, um, we all know from the SP Morton bathroom refurbishment that they got in there because of the age of the building, there's no hot, there was no hot water in the bathrooms because, you know, back in the sixties, it wasn't required. And then you get into looking at the high school, and guess what? Same thing.
I don't really have a question, just a comment, um, in, you know, other previous meetings that we've had with the city, I expect pushback from them. Um, you know, where's, where's the capital spending plan for, you know, the new schools? And I, I still haven't seen one yet, so, you know, and I understand that these are the priority because we need something that the kids can, you know, be in the schools right now, and we can't build a school, you know, literally for tomorrow, or even, you know, for next year. Um, but I do think that that should kind of be one of our priorities too, because I know that that's something that the city has asked for and is looking for, um, and since it is, you know, on their responsibility list, then I think we should provide that to them, so that they could be planning for that.
Agreed. I know, um, Mr. Holt, I probably will defer to you on this, but we had a conversation, Mr. Holt reached out to some connections that he has. Because of course, getting a, an estimate on a new school building is gonna require some money to pay someone to look at, um, what it's gonna cost to build that building. So Mr. Holt reached out to some connections that he had, and please correct me if I'm wrong with what I say, Mr. Holt. But if we had, if we had have gone ahead and really pursued this two years ago, a new school building may have cost us about twenty-five to thirty million. And at, as of about a couple of months ago, a new school was costing, on the low end of average, forty-seven million to build.
Right, correct. And every month it goes up.
Right, so getting the ball rolling as soon as possible would seem to be the prudent thing to do, I would think. You know, uh, at, at least to get some plans and to see when we could do it.
And I guess the, the thing we would need to, and I would have to defer to building and grounds on that, because I would have to let them take the lead on that, is um, how much would the things we need to do to look at that and get that price tag really nailed down? How much is that gonna cost the division, and where are we gonna pay for it from? So, that, that would have to defer to building and grounds on that and operations, to look at that.
So when is, when is this report, this is the report that will be presented to?
We are getting ready to open up public hearing on that.
Okay.
Um, for anyone, anyone from the public that has any comment, feedback, or anything on that. And then, following the public hearing, um, we will entertain a motion from the board if we so choose to, um, approve the proposed budget to be turned over to the city next week. On, excuse me, on the fourteenth, the gapper next.
So my question then, the, with the priority, that list of the capital improvements, that's included?
Mm-hmm. Yes, we're looking at two separate budgets. Um, we have one, of course, that combines overall to what will be allocated to the school division. But we have our regular operating budget, and then we have our capital improvement budget.
Okay. They're two separate documents?
Correct.
Okay.
Any, any other questions?
Well, I would agree with Johnson that it would be prudent to, to have some kind of plan in place for, you know, if we're gonna propose a new structure, you know, to at least have some kind of outline for the board to, to. for the board to, to understand some kind of, uh, timeline and, and general recommendation sooner than later.
And I'm not sure, uh, and Mr. Rider, maybe you'd be able to answer this. That statement from the cafer that talks about, you know, the city being responsible for, um, the capital improvements, like would they be responsible for that initial outset of money that you're talking about?
Right.
Because if they were, then that wouldn't be something that the school division would have to incur.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just, uh, I mean, I just looked at literally the data out of the, out of the report, um, and, and, uh, you know, that, that just really does go hand in hand with the, what the mayor has been requesting from us, uh, you know, give us a capital budget and, uh, you know, I think he's, he probably had this in mind because, you know, the city must provide all capital funds and, and since we can't issue funds, yeah, maybe we're there in the long term to take out the debt, um, and pay for the expenses. So it would be fair balance, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So is there an existing committee, capital improvements committee?
Mm-hmm. Within the division, yes, there is.
So is there?
Well, building and grounds.
Or building and ground.
Yes, there is a building and grounds committee.
Is there, is there, uh, plans to present to the board as a whole? Any plans, recommendations?
I do not sit on building and grounds, so I would have to defer to those that do sit on building and grounds, um, which I believe is Mr. Holt's.
Yeah, we haven't even discussed that, uh.
So that, that may need to be taken back to that committee and that conversation started. And I know we've been entertaining that, uh, we were looking at, a year and a half ago, um, a, a committee on looking at not just capital improvements, but at a new school building. And we were looking at pulling in stakeholders, well, I guess it was two years ago, looking at pulling in stakeholders to get feedback on what the community needs were because we, we kind of need to know that as we're building a school building. Because if, if the city has expectations to grow, for instance, if they are looking at, eh, you know, additional housing, for instance, coming into the division, that's going to impact the size of the building that we need to accommodate the student inflow that we may have. If they're looking at certain, um, certain industries coming in, that may impact what type of facilities that we have to be able to accommodate the needs of those industries to have the, the employees trained for those positions, for those industries. So there, that was the, the original thought and we had difficulties getting buy-in and participation with that.
Buy-in of even making recommendations?
From, from, from some stakeholders.
Oh, okay. So how is, how's the committee supposed to do its job?
That's a very good question.
Well, my feeling is that, you know, it'd be, um, I think what we're doing already is anticipate, listen to previous comments or requests from the city regarding capital improvements and future, I'm not sure to, uh, the right terminology, uh, capital improvements and new structures, but, um, I like, you know, if, if, if it's gonna help the budget process, even if we have a rough outline or, or projection, I think it, I'm wondering if it'd be helpful to have that as part of our presentation to the city.
So I would, I would probably suggest pushing back to building and grounds and that be a conversation that the individuals on that committee have a conversation, um, with how to proceed with formulating a ti- first of all, a timeline for what we would be looking at as far as starting on looking at a new school building and, you know, timeline on how long it would take to build. Because if it takes three years, there may be additional capital improvements that are needed on the buildings we do have to sustain until we can get that done. And then looking on how to come up, um, and fund any surveys, any, um, estimates that need to be given, um, how that would be funded. And, you know, I think, I, I wholeheartedly think the city's got to be part of that conversation because that's where the money's coming from. It's not like we can raise the money ourselves.
I have a whole timeline that was sent to me by Bryce Powell, one of our graduates, who's an architect. And he just laid out the whole scenario and it's about a three-year process. So we can pull that out and have that discussion.
Um, is there a scheduled, um, building and grounds meeting anytime soon?
No, but we can do that, yeah.
And then I would suggest probably bringing it back and Miss Barkalter, you may, um, the superintendent's office may want to be part of those conversations to help direct that, um, and, and focus that in the area it needs to, to go.
I, I would find it helpful just even, as part of that conversation, just, uh, kind of, as you started, just have a broad view of, of steps that are needed, not, you know, really not necessarily any decisions, just identifying, um, the basic vision, you know, what we need at minimum, how does that, uh, the timeline and how that, um, would affect current needs on capital improvements and repairs.
And then I would, I would say at some point, there needs to be a conversation with the city, um, as to what we're looking at, at moving forward. Um, so that they, you know, they have some input and idea on, because the, that the financial burden is gonna be on the city.
Right.
We will meet and have a preliminary within thirty days.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, didn't we have, um, I recall Mr. Rider showing us a presentation about a possible building a while ago? Might have been within, uh, two years ago. I just recall the presentation, building with solar panels and how the school would, how it's gonna work.
Uh, Dr. Sterling did, it was a, I, I know exactly, I remember that. And, and I don't remember all the details of it, but it was a very brief discussion over what a future new school building could look like for us. It had a swimming pool and, and all that. Yes, I do remember that. Mm-hmm. And I think then, I, I think at that point, the, the average price tag for that was twenty-five million. Yep. So we're looking at almost double that now, depending on what the building is like, so, yeah. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, then I will open the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget, um, regular operating budget and capital improvement budget, and open the floor to anyone that wishes to speak. Does anyone wish to speak in regards to the twenty-twenty-three budgets for Franklin City Public Schools? Does anyone wish to speak in regards to, to, to the Franklin City Public Schools twenty-twenty-three budget? Does anyone wish to speak in regards to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three Franklin City Public Schools budget? Hearing none, I close the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three Franklin City Public Schools budget and capital improvement budget. Um, two things that I will note in there, um, to the regular operating budget, we were looking at only rec- a request for an increase for two things. And one was the match for the HVAC grant to replace that evaporation cooler behind SP Morton, um, and some air purifiers throughout the buildings. Um, and then the other was the funding to, um, increase teacher pay across the division. So that was the only two re- increased requests that we were looking at. Um, so, hearing none, is there any other discussion amongst the board in regards to the twenty-twenty-three operating budget and the twenty-twenty-three capital improvement budget? Hearing none, does anyone care to make a motion in regards, and we're not adopting yet, that would come in May, once the city has appropria- uh, set the appropriation for next year? So if you are motioning, we would be looking at either an, um, approval of the proposed budget to be submitted to the city. If you are looking to deny, then you would deny the same. So deny the presentation of the approved budget, of the proposed budget to the city.
I move to accept the presentation of the proposed budget and capital budget to the city.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the proposed budget to be turned over to the city.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. All right, you have approval to turn those over to the city, Mr. Rider?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, and I depended on Miss Moore because my internet connection just decided it did not want to work. So next up, we have consent agenda. First is the update, um, in regards to the masking policy. Um, as you may recall, I polled the board, um, earlier in the week regarding the masking on transportation because the CDC changed their guidance as of Friday and removed that masking requirement on public transportation, including school buses. So we have this update here, we made that effective as of March first, but of course, as a formality, we have to vote on that as a board, uh, because it is policy. So we do have to change that. So this right now is just in regards to that, the masking on transportation. Um, since it's not part of the consent agenda, what I would like to do, if it's okay with the board, is to bring the discussion of masking for visitors and/or staff under business by the board. Is everyone okay with that?
It's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. So this would just be a formality of, um, eh, under the consent agenda, this one would just be a formality of, um, the vote to change the requirement on the, on the school buses, to do away with the mandate. Next up is the budget adjustment, um, in regards to continuing ed. So, you know, it's always, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rider, we're, it's always, we're never right on the penny with that Title III because the, they, they end up deciding later on exactly how much we're gonna get. So it was a whole two dollars and six cent difference. So, we have to make that adjustment. And then, of course, that continuing ed support grant of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, um, is there as well. Next up is the SP Morton MOD A furniture. This is the furniture to, um, go in the MOD, uh, the new modular at SP Morton. And, um, I'm sure as you saw, there was some sticker shock with that price tag. And that is a, um, direct reflection of the cost of supplies and how much the cost of supplies, um, changed. And we actually went, the division actually went back and revisited that and changed, um, some of what they were, what we were gonna put in the MOD because those prices increased so significantly. So there were adjustments made to that and I'm gonna, that's okay, technically, we're having some technical difficulty, so we're getting there. The next thing is food service policy. The next item, as Miss Moore's bringing that up, thank you, Miss Johnson, is, um, the food service policy. As you may recall, we had that presented to us for first reading at the last meeting. Um, and we did ask for the revisions as the strike-throughs and the underlines for what was changing. So that is reflected here, um, as Dr. White had indicated with both of these policies, this and the next one that we're looking at as well, it was pretty much a major overhaul of both of those policies. So as you will see, the red underlined is the additions, the ones that are struck in through are the, are what's being removed. And then the next one behind that is the, um, local student wellness, um, same thing with this one. Red strike-throughs are what's being removed, those that are red and underlined are what's being added.
Yeah, when I read it, I was like, it's all written in red.
Yes, yes. The, um, Dr. White actually made us, eh, last week, we were like, but we don't know what's new. And she was like, well, it's pretty much all new.
Yeah, it really is.
Almost on both of them because the, the other one, a lot of it, um, is new as well. Um, next up is four point six, which is the minutes from January the thirteenth. And then right behind that, we have the me- the minute meetings from, um, February the third, from our work session. And then lastly, we have the meeting, the minute, minutes, ooh, da, I cannot say meeting minutes, um, from our February the, um, tenth meeting.
Can we pull four point six and four point eight and vote on them separately? We don't have to vote on them individually, but like, we can group them together.
Four, so, um, pull four point two, uh, four point six and four point eight and vote on those two as?
A group.
A group, okay.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, can we pull four point five as a separate?
Sure. All right, so let's, let's do this. Let's do four point five first.
Why are we pulling four point five?
Because I, I'm, we'll abstain.
Oh, okay. So then you'd be pulled?
He'd have to stay on the entire agenda.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so let's do four point five first, then we'll do four point six and four point eight and then we can do the remainder of the consent agenda. Okay? All right, so do we have a motion in regards to four point five?
I move to approve four point five as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Jerry McQuary, Ward six, abstain.
That motion carries. Next up, we have items four point six and four point eight. Do we have a motion in regards to items four point six and four point eight?
I will approve.
We have a motion to approve items four point six and four point eight, which are the minutes from January the thirteenth and the minutes from February tenth. Any discussion? Uh, second?
Second.
We have a second, sorry. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Carrie Johnson, at large, abstain.
That motion carries. Do we have a motion in regards to the remainder of the consent agenda to include four point one, four point two, four point three, four point four, and four point seven?
I still move.
To?
Approve as presented.
Okay. Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda to include four point one, four point two, four point three, four point four, and four point seven. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next up, because we couldn't get rid of Mr. Rider for finance too soon, we're gonna bring him right back for finance and federal programs, maybe.
I think Tammy got rid of him.
Yeah. Tammy, did you get rid, Miss Moore, did you get rid of him?
No, he's down.
Okay. Uh, there he is.
I don't see, uh, the, the FOIA request.
Yep, FOIA requests.
Yes, I'm also a FOIA officer. Okay, um, I received two FOIA requests, two requests made under the Information Act. Uh, one was from the Richmond Times Dispatch, whether it is word or asking for what books that we, uh, either removed, what were recommended for removing. what were recommended for removing, um, oh, sorry, shoot, uh, uh, sorry, that, that myself. So there were two, uh, there were two FOIAs that processed in February, um, within the schedule for, uh, five days schedule for time, so, okay, we'll send that, that response. The first one was from FOIA one, was, uh, from the, um, Richmond Times Dispatch, asking if we had since August of twenty twenty forward, if we have any books that we remove from our libraries, uh, recommended for removal, by parents, recommended for removal, by school staff members, that kind of stuff. And, uh, as I told, uh, Ms. Murphy, uh, principal, uh, principals, uh, didn't have, didn't have it, so, no, none, none of those, I just, none. Uh, from August, we did not remove any books for the reasons that they stated. And I just mentioned that the most people who remove normally are obviously isn't going to be effective adoption, you will be the old folks, so they're obsolete. But not for the reasons I said, and they, uh, they actually do that, that FOIA. Uh, the FOIA, FOIA request number two, this is the same, I hope, guys, I'm, uh, smart computer sends these out about eighteen months. And they want, from the last time I made, uh, uh, made it on all of our purchases, uh, they just wanted from the, the, so the last time they asked us, it was like Sep- September of twenty twenty, so we just go to our computer and ask for that thing to today. So I can imagine about a year and a half from now, I'll, I'll be getting me another one, February twenty twenty forward, February twenty twenty forward. So, uh, the next page, um, it's thirty-three page, it is making up thirty-three page, you know, thing, uh, that's a little snippet on there on the right side, yeah. Uh, this is, it's just a, just a number, everything is on our computer, they're, and, um, it's basically, because I have the, I'm going into a website, all I have is the paste in, the thing, you know, the thing. So, two FOIAs, any, any questions, I don't know.
Who would be the benefit of the newspaper wanting to know about our textbooks and how we had disposed or not disposed of?
That's a hot button topic right now because there have been some school divisions that have, um, pulled books. There have been some school divisions that parents have requested certain books pulled from libraries, um, within the school divisions. So it's kind of a hot button right now, um, within the public forum. So that's, that's what it is, they're looking to see what other divisions out there have encountered the same thing and what actions they've taken if they have. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Ryder.
Thank you.
Alright, moving right along and next up, curriculum and instruction. And I think we have several joining us tonight.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, um, I'm excited to come and present to you our tutorial plans, uh, that we're using to help catch students up and keep them up, uh, as we continue to progress through the school year. Both S.P. Morton, um, and J.P. King utilize student data in helping to develop this plan. So we're gonna start with S.P. Morton and we'll kind of walk you through the, the process of how we, uh, developed our plan. Both plans are supported with Title I funds primarily. Our tutoring actually began this past Monday, um, and will continue through June ninth. What we did is we looked specifically for areas of reading and math, uh, as our focus areas. For our children in kindergarten through second grade, we used our PALS data, our, uh, beginning year and mid-year scores, and identified children who scored below benchmark, uh, on those assessments. For third, fourth, and fifth grade students, we utilized the first and second rounds of benchmark testing. So what you could see, um, are, are students in tiers two and three. These students require some additional supports in order to meet grade level, uh, expectations. Each teacher recommended between five and seven students to participate in after-school tutoring. You can see that the data suggests that there are many more students who require some additional supports in place beyond that which can be provided in our after-school tutoring program. So at S.P. Morton, we are utilizing our reading specialist and curriculum specialist to provide additional supports for children who, uh, were not invited to participate in the program by their classroom teacher. We're also continuing to use our PALS tutors to work specifically with our students in kindergarten through second grade. We are funding two teachers per grade level, um, so each teacher, uh, is estimated to work with approximately ten students so that they have that intensive, uh, reteaching moment. And again, we're gonna focus, uh, on reading and math, and we're also gonna supplement in the area of science. I do wanna thank our, um, partners in transportation and food and nutrition because we have been able to secure two drivers to help provide, uh, transportation home in the afternoon so that that's not an obstacle for our children or our families. And, uh, in food services, we are providing students with at least a snack, uh, before they begin their tutoring program. We are working to, uh, potentially be able to provide them with a meal before they get into tutoring, uh, just to make sure that they have the energy that they need, uh, to be successful. You'll see at S.P. Morton, we are focusing on one content, uh, primarily per day. So reading is gonna be the primary focus on Mondays and Tuesdays, and math is gonna be the primary focus on Wednesdays and Thursdays. We are gonna utilize two supplemental programs, uh, to help support our students and monitor their growth from now until the end of the school year. Similarly, at J.P. King, uh, again, tutoring began on Monday and will continue through June ninth, uh, Monday through Thursday. With the data provided here, this was pulled from benchmark testing and J.P. King is just a little bit different because we do offer, um, our middle school students several opportunities to take accelerated math. Um, our after-school tutoring program is providing supports for Math Six, Math Eight, and Algebra One. Based on staffing, that was what we were able to meet the need of, uh, with our students. But again, you can see that the data from the benchmark assessments were broken down to identify the children who would most benefit from after-school tutoring. Again, we're funding two teachers per grade level to provide that, uh, intensive support and we're also utilizing, uh, Saturday school as an option for our students, uh, as we lead up to the very near writing assessment, um, in eighth grade and, um, using that time also, uh, for some specific science instruction as we move forward beyond, uh, the middle of March. Similar to S.P. Morton, J.P. King is focusing on, uh, one content, uh, per day. So again, uh, reading and English are the focus on Mondays and Tuesdays, math is the focus, Wednesdays and Thursdays, uh, and again, supporting, uh, writing and science via Saturday school. So this evening, one of the things that I do, uh, want to address, we have several families who have reached out to us and asked if their child can participate in our after-school tutoring program. My response has been, uh, we're gonna allow families the, just a little more time to get those permission slips in. Uh, we do wanna work with the students that the teachers and our curriculum specialists have identified first, uh, but we also do want to make sure that we're serving as many children as practically possible because we still want to be able to have that, uh, small group feel where teachers have the opportunity to really help move our children forward. So again, this was, uh, once we have, uh, our permission slips back in, i- if there's still some room that's available by grade level, that is something that we can take into consideration, but, uh, we're gonna do that on a case-by-case basis moving forward. So again, this evening, the, the presentation is really just, um, structural and we're gonna be coming back to you in a, a few meetings in the future, uh, to kind of share the progress that we're making with our students and, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about our program.
So are you finding that the majority of the students that have been invited to participate are in need of both math and English remediation? And is that the reason why you have decided to devote two days to math and two days to reading?
Yes, ma'am, we're, we're finding that the students really do require supports in both of those subjects. And we wanted the students to have the opportunity to have, uh, some intensive time with the teacher and supports from the online program that we're gonna be utilizing.
Okay, um, s- So for the, for the reading teacher, for instance, so on Wednesdays and Thursdays, they're not encumbered by any after-school tutorial sessions?
That is.
If you're not doing any, is that what I'm understanding?
That, that is the case more so at, um, J.P. King, we do have teachers who are, are really focused on particular content. At S.P. Morton, even with our fourth and fifth grade teachers providing those supports, um, they are still filling that role and supporting in math, for instance, even if it is an English teacher.
Okay, 'cause I was just wondering if that would be a way to get in some of those other students that may only need the remediation for, you know, one subject if those teachers were not, or if they even wanted to, like, I wouldn't wanna put any more on a teacher. You know, of course, you know, I know they have their boundaries, but, um, if, if students, you know, had the need and they did only have that one subject, just wondering.
That's definitely something for us to consider.
How about attendance, have you been happy with the level of attendance?
Um, right now at S.P. Morton, we have approximately forty to forty-five students who have returned their permission slips. Things have definitely improved through this week, with this being our first week. Uh, I believe numbers at J.P. King are right around fifteen to twenty right now. So, uh, we would like to see additional students, um, but we're very, very happy to be working with those whose families have agreed to have them attend.
Alright, thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions?
So, based on the number that you're serving and the number that you sent out, I'm gathering that you have a higher percentage of lack of response.
That is true, we're gonna be following up with families, um, to make sure that they have those permission slips. Sometimes they, they have a way of getting lost between school and home. So we definitely wanna make sure that the students, the teachers and the specialists have identified and, and recommended for participation, um, have that opportunity. But again, we'll be opening it up, uh, for other students to be attending as well.
Anything else? I have to say, I, I just want to commend the staff for being willing to step forward, you know, outside of the normal hours of being in the classroom after you've been in the classroom all day. It shows the dedication of our staff to these students and moving them forward. So I, you know, I just wanna say to, hopefully, there's a teacher out there somewhere that's watching or goes back and watches this, you know. Thank you for being so committed to moving these students forward and thank you guys as well because you're, you're sitting there in the trenches with them too, so thank you.
And just one question, I mean, will you be able to measure, you think, um, the success of the tutoring?
I do, um, right now, our teachers are focusing on some of the most frequently missed pieces of the benchmark assessment. When we add in that online program, that is gonna specifically help us to track the progress, um, that students are making over the, the period of, of time with tutoring. One of the, the program that we're gonna utilize with math is designed to identify the misconception that the student has, to help the teacher, uh, correct that misconception for moving forward.
And I guess I'll just put a plug in 'cause hopefully, there's parents that are paying attention too that, you know, if you have a child that you know is struggling, they were probably identified for participation. So if you haven't seen a permission slip, come home, please, call the school building and the staff will work with you to get you that permission slip and get everything arranged for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
No, I, well, I'll, I'll jump on what you just said, yeah, I would encourage parents to, if you have a child that can benefit from it. I, I just recall back in school having that one-on-one with teachers and I only had one or two classes that, that was capable because they were small, but I, I learned so much more. So I, I think that's a great program.
Anything else? Thank you guys very much. Alright. Poor Ms. Moore, we're gonna work her to death tonight. Alright, next up, um, FCPS audit review, and we are starting with nutrition.
And I just wanna say thank you to Mr. Walters and Dr. Tindall and Dr. Stafford for working collaboratively on those tutorial plans. This is their first time going through that, excellent job. So, um, we wanna give you real-time information with the audit findings because we are being audited on several grants this year. So because we haven't been audited with the USDA in a while, we wanted to provide you the audit findings that we will provide in writing with the work that we're starting to do to address it with the corrective actions. And then at the next meeting, Ms. Vargas will be here to answer your questions, but we wanted to give it to you in advance because as you can see, we already asked you all to add the two policies. And, uh, we also had some work in the findings that we had to do, so there's different layers of things that was going. So we wanted to give it to you all ahead of time so that you all would have a couple of weeks to look at it and then she will be back at the school board meeting in two weeks to answer your questions. Okay? Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Carter coming up to provide you an update with the Title III.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The last title, the last Title III audit for English language learners was in twenty seventeen, so, um, every five years, they propose an audit, and so this was our turn again, so, just going through, for me personally, it was a great learning experience, uh, being as also a person who learned many hats as the EL coordinator and learning, uh, how we can increase our efforts in making a robust, uh, EL program. So here are some of the findings, so they were taking a look at some of our language change in our forms and our home language surveys. They also provide a, a written procedure to identify Ls and include screening language, uh, to have a planned agenda, making sure that we review student records, uh, home language surveys. We also had to, uh, make sure that we, uh, upgrade our translation, make sure that we service that out to make sure that we have, right now, we have three languages, we have Arabic, we have Vietnamese, and we have Spanish. So those are the three languages, we need to make sure that we have that information readily available to those parents, uh, to send out. So certificates needed to always be upgraded, so that was, that, that has been done as well. And then the communication, making sure that because we have a lot, we have some new staff and to make sure that everyone is up to date with, uh, making sure that, uh, the language line contact registers, everyone knows, uh, what the procedures are. Guiding questions for findings, also, the, uh, the program that we have, the push-in, pull-out program, uh, they're recommending that at Level One and Level Two, that would be three hundred minutes per week and that at the students that are ranging between Level Three and Level Four, that they would have, I'm sorry, Level One and Level Two is, is three- that they would have, I'm sorry, Level One and Level Two is, is three hundred minutes. Level Three and Four is a hundred and fifty minutes. So, four point four or higher is passing on the WIDA assessments. So that's how that works out. So at this current point, we have to increase the minutes, the structural minutes that we have for our L students to reflect a hundred and fifty minutes for those who are scoring at Level Three and Level Four and three hundred minutes per week for those who are scoring Level, Level One and Two. And so currently, we're at roughly about seventy-five minutes per week. So we have to really increase it up on that level. And we're looking at doing that by now. And as you see the other guiding questions, you have EL participation. Numbers are asking basically, how many kids are in dual enrollment? How many kids are in CTE classes? How many kids are honors at the high school level? And so they wanted that data as well. They're also asking that when we have a child study, each EL student is evaluated for, make sure that we have, they're assessed, see if they need special needs services as well. So we have to put a process together to make sure that happens. And then you have your access data. And even though the parents may wanna opt out of the program, they still must be tested. And so that, that was also something that we needed to do. And then the parent engagement plan, how we reach out to parents, make it inclusive and overwhelming for them to come into schools. And then you have an analysis of the Title III funding, what can be spent, what cannot be spent. And so we're looking at ramping up professional development for our teachers with our Title III funding. The other finding that you see is translating documents. You also see L accessible to accommodations on SOLs. So what we found out is even after they have exited, years one and two after they have exited, we still must provide accommodations for them even though they have tested out of the program. So we're gonna make sure that happens. You have your, your next guiding findings where you have, must take immediate action steps for students who have been dropped out and interest in exit procedures. You see that also you have making sure that each services have full, the academic implications of opting out of EL services. The third bullet point is that even though we only have fourteen EL students, we're at thirty-eight percent opt-out. And we, we need to be around one percent, and that's what's averaging around the same. Code green is all the things that have been completed thus far. And since this was submitted, some more things have actually been included into the code green area. As you can see, the change of language survey and all the other forms here. You can see the provided certificates. You can see that the screening has been updated. You can see that the coding has been updated for snapshots for ELS, status code one and two. And then you can see the other things that also have been completed. Code yellow is everything that's in progress. So what has changed is then, we have, we have had a, we have training that has taken place with all our registers, school counselors, our adminis-, uh, we're gonna go ahead and do our administrators on the next principal's meeting, and that has been updated. We also have tomorrow, I think, with the translation services to make sure that we can have all our documents rolled over in Arabic, Spanish, and Vietnamese. So that will be tomorrow to discuss that with the vendor. So that's all the play. I have the percentages and numbers for the CTE programs and courses, which looks very impressive as, as I looked. Every student that, that we do have at the high school is either in dual enrollment, a CTE course, or some type of specialized program, so I'm certainly encouraging that. Code red is, I'm still working on the hundred and fifty minutes, the three hundred minute scenario to see what we can do to ramp up those minutes right now with our two teachers. And so I will be talking with, with the principal, Mr. Velce, he doesn't know that yet, but he'll keep up to now. And I'll be calling him this shortly to talk about different scenarios of how we can work that out. Also, reaching out to our opt-out parents that have opted out and let, and let them know, please stay in the program because you still have to test out. Even though you may refuse the services from the EL teachers, you still have to pass the access test. So it is of your benefit to stay in. All these findings have to be completed by March fifteenth. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have some questions. So you mentioned that the last audit was five years ago. And I noticed at the beginning, you were talking about there were some forms that needed to be redone and whatnot. And I'm just curious, were these things that were found on a previous audit that just had never been taken care of? Or are these new requirements that have never been put in place? I mean, this just seems kinda like a long list that hasn't been addressed, and I was-
On the last, on the last audit, twenty seventeen, there was no findings. And it just, we asked that question, they said it just depends on the order.
Okay, all right, but you all are aware of the types of things that were, like, you're aware of the hundred and fifty minute and three hundred minute requirement, and you're aware of the languages that we have, like the Vietnamese and the Spanish and the Arabic, and that we didn't have that and that sort of thing. So I'm, are these new requirements that have just been recently put into place? Or are they just things that have just fallen by the wayside? I'm, I was kind of taken aback by the number of findings that we have.
Yeah, so-
And I, and just to, to add on to that, we seem to be getting an increasing number of English language learners in our division. And I, I don't want that special population to fall by the wayside. So this is something that I, I certainly want to see rectified because I, I don't, I, I do know that they are in the high school and they are in special programming, you know, like the advanced courses and whatnot. But when we have them coming up from, you know, the, the younger schools and if we have parents opting out, I wanna make sure they're opting out for the right reasons and not because they can't understand the forms or they don't understand the programming or we're not engaging them and we're not doing everything that we possibly can to be reaching these families. So I'm concerned.
And, and yes, and so we are, we have put a team together. We're working diligently to, to make sure that all of those things are turned over and they are rectified and repaired. So I, I, I hear your concern and we are on it. And so I just wanted to just let you know that some of the findings, I'm not sure because, because I, you know, I took over, I took over the program a year ago. So I'm not sure exactly what happened the previous four years. So some of, some of the things I will say to you that we were not aware of and some of the things that it just, it might have fallen by the wayside, but we will go ahead and take care of it, we'll make sure that it's, and that's as bad as transparent as I can be with that.
Right, I mean, we can't turn back time, but we can certainly change it from here forward.
Yes, yes, yes. So all, so all the things, all the things that are happening will be in play, or if not already, in play by March fifteenth.
So with that thirty perc-, thirty-eight percent opt-out, do we have a reason why that percentage is so high? And the norm is, I think you said like about one percent?
We have right now currently a push-in, pull-out program. And so the auditor was stating that she recommends that we either have a full-time EL teacher or part-time EL teacher because the students and the parents don't see the value. Because, because right now, we have two Spanish teachers and they, they pull in during a period. And during that period is when they're able to work with the students. And so the students, the students and the parents may not see the value in just that one period. But if it was a, if it was an individual class, they would probably more than likely see the value, and that was her explanation.
So they're asking for more consistency in terms of, 'cause I know pulling and pull-out, is that a certain day and time every-
Yes, so, so they, during their planning period, they would come and work with the students. And so if you have a, a part-time or a full-time teacher just dedicated and a class period just dedicated to, to those students, you, they'd really have a more robust program.
There, there's just an idea or something to consider, would, would having a class at the same time as the, the tutoring? Is that an option?
It is an option, and so I'm, I'm playing together some scenarios right now.
Maybe, maybe you could have more frequent classes even beyond-
Yes, it could be something after school, it could be a Saturday school. It could be taking a look, like, right now, I'm noticing that they're meeting with each student one day, one day a week. And that combine, combining, so for instance, if they had to go to SP Morton, combining two or three students together and seeing them multiple days to increase the minutes. And so these are different scenarios that we, that we can look at right now to increase the minutes.
I, I would think more than once a week would be much, or, you know, a few day, two or, at least two or three days a week.
Yeah, 'cause if you're, if you're looking at the three hundred minutes, you know, that's five hours.
Well, I'm just saying, just even from having, from experience, both teaching and learning, that the more time you can get closer together, it's easier to retain and they might see more benefit then.
Any other questions, discussion? All right, I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up is the superintendent's report. Ms. Barkhalter.
Thank you. All right, and thank you, Dr. Carter, for your work towards your corrective actions. And he's working very closely with, you know, we have our new grants coordinator, Katina Austin. She is very deep into this work right now, along, as well as Kim Phillips, in supporting him with the corrective action down to enhancing and revamping the EL handbook. So that is his team that he didn't mention, but those two are working very closely with him. You're welcome, wouldn't wanna slight them on the work they're doing. So with the superintendent's report, the fun part of the night, we start out with the FCPS School Board Appreciation Presentation. So at the last school board meeting, I was not here, so Ms. Moore told you it would be, to be continued. So we will start with, the schools had a presentation for you all at the last school board meeting, and two of you all were absent. So we, those were your gifts sitting at the table.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
I can't wait to taste that coffee cake because Dr. Tyndall and Mr. Walters have been raving about it.
It's delicious.
Oh, I got my box tonight over there, so I'll put it there.
Should've come with a- Just so y'all know, I had some leftover and it is hidden behind some peas in my freezer. If it came with a fork, it would already be open, just so you know.
Terry Johnson, are you the person on Christmas sitting at the Christmas tree? 'Cause you were ready just now. You're ready to open it. It's water all over everything.
Maybe.
So first I have to say thank you to Mee Strattler because she entertains, she gets more excited about when I do little treats. And I never have the time to finish it at the ninety-nine percent, so thank you for finishing as always. So I'll start out first, you have a certificate here that reads, "From your V S B A, School Board Appreciation Month, Building the Future of Public Education." And it's signed by Gina Patterson, your executive director, and your V S B A president, Terry Martin the second. So next, we couldn't close out the month without you receiving a gift from your entire FCPS family. So you see there with the box, it has flowers on the outside. Raise your hand if you've heard, "Give me my flowers while I'm here on earth." So my mom has always taught us to give us her flowers while she's here on earth because so many times, we wait until our loved ones are deceased and then we put flowers out for them, whether it's on a tombstone or in a specific area. So the outside of the box is to remind you how you're appreciated and we're reminding you by giving you your flowers while you're here. Now, you can open your box.
And Carrie is, Ms. Johnson is just jumping off. Didn't have so much energy, just like, really game time.
So, this is what is called a school board balanced life box. So you all always remind me often to keep a balance. When you're walking through the hallways or you're taking concerns from citizens and or teachers, you're always reminding them to take time for themselves and to take care of themselves. So, dear school board members, there is no such thing as a work-life balance. It is all life. The balance has to be with you. For your time and service to the Franklin City Public Schools community, you are greatly appreciated for all you do. You work hard, but playtime is just as important, just ask any teacher or student. With gratitude and much appreciation, this balanced life box was especially, I have a typo there, I'll redo that, designed with each of you in mind. Or you can just chalk it to my country accent and say I put it that way. So, you have your placard in your box, and that is your positive affirmation box. As a reminder, there is always something good and positive in each day. Then you have your cup to remind you how full all your life is and that it is overflowing with goodness. You have your water because it's healthy and to remind you that health should be a priority. Your almond bar is to remind you to find joy in each and every day. Your Snickers is to remind you that laughter is good for the soul. The Musketeers is because you all are the seven musketeers. You are armed with a policy to support FCPS. And the Reese's Fast Break is to remind you to rest and re-energize yourself, your body, and thank you for all that you will do. So in closing, even though the box was to hold your gift, they can also be used as multipurpose. So what I do with my friends is, if they are very religious, it is your something for God to do box. And you write your prayers on a sheet of paper and you put them in a box and you revisit it at the end of each month to see which ones came to fruition. If you are not religious, whether it's your family or your friends, this is a box for when you all come together and you share out all the ways that you've made memories. And on December thirty-first, you look back at all of your memories from the time you received the box into the end. And lastly, if none of those appeal to you, then pay it forward and give the balanced life box to someone else, field and designed especially for them. Thank you for all that you do, each and every one of you.
I'm gonna need another box so I could do both of those things. But not a third, 'cause I don't wanna give away. Uh, Ms. Barkhalter, you never cease to amaze me.
Yeah, I thought we were adequately recognized last month, but this is, this is phenomenal.
Thank you, just like with our teachers, we wanna continually show them multiple ways that we appreciate them because they are teaching in unprecedented times and it's the same for you all. You are being board members and leading in unprecedented times, and we thank you for all that you do as well. So some highlights of what's happening in the district over the last two weeks. Black History Month at Samuel P. Elementary School. So, they had the thing, the Joy of Black History. They did gallery wall, and all the doors were decorated throughout the building and they had their judges. I even ran through the building looking at the different doors. So here they have their judges here. And then the, for the door decorating contest, the winners won an ice cream party. And then here's some samples of the doors. Oh, these were my top two choices. And then we had the Jacksons, the greatest of all time. So here you see Michael Jackson, Janet Jackson, and Maya Angelou. And then here were the students performing, this is a picture, but it's actually a video that's not here, where they perform. And then at Joseph P. King Junior Middle School, each morning during the month of February, they did the televised Mustang morning announcements. And then they also- And then they also had some of the presentations were on the different members that you see listed there. I won't read them to you. So here's a picture of the morning announcements taking place with Dr. Stafford, some of her team. Then you see the different multicultural outfits. And then the P B I S faculty versus student basketball game, that was the highlight of the week last Friday. Dr. Stafford is very much in shape. Dr. Carter did an excellent job huffing and puffing up and down the court, but they both made points. And they both were bragging, both of you all texted me Friday evening, "The staff won." So the staff won, as you can see the final score. And the beautiful thing about that faculty, student, and staff game, they pulled in on the faculty, Mr. Johnny, one of the maintenance and custodians was even on the floor playing with the kids. So it was really all hands in with that, so it was it was very nice to see. You had Mr. Low there, you had the family engagement specialist over the concession stand, the teachers that weren't playing, they were assisting with the food too, so it was a great way to end the week. Kudos to you all. Here's some of the pictures.
I have a question.
Yes.
Who refereed the game?
So Mr. Riddick, he did dual roles, he was on the concession stand.
So so we don't know that it was unbiased?
We do, he's unbiased.
I was checking.
The kids did not take it easy on them. Now, I wasn't there when Mr. Carter scored points, so I don't know. But I was there when Dr. Stafford was doing her layups and everything, so but it was really great. And then at Franklin High School, you see here, they did the daily Black History Month trivia. Mr. Felton, I was going to tell you, you didn't extend it to the district this year because last year Kim won and everything. You all kept it in-house, but it's still always great. And you see that he provided gift cards for different prizes. And then as always, they strive to be cross-curricular and Ms. Brittany Boone pulls in the arts for the students. And you see here, they had a mural where they, each staff member and students could show that they're participating in black history with their handprint. And then students also had an opportunity to express their art, whether it was through photography, drawing with pencil, painting with ink, and you see some of the pictures here. And then here we have a student showing his pride with his painting. And then, of course, this week is Read Across America Week. I'm sure some of you all are going to be guest readers tomorrow. And so you see here, on Monday, they started out with the one hundredth day of school, and you can see here, students and staff were dressed. On Tuesday, they had Fox in the Socks Day, and Wednesday, Dr. Seuss Character Day. And then they also had green eggs and ham for lunch, pictured here. And then on Thursday, which was today, they had Crazy Hat Day for students and staff. And then, of course, let's read in the most creative ways, here they are outside. And then today, I asked my department yesterday with less than twenty-four hour notice, would they do a readers theater with me, and we were short too because I still have two positions to fill in my department. And Angie Edwards and Kim Billip- Phillips graciously accepted the challenge. And you can see here, we did a readers theater and it was just snippets from different books of Dr. Seuss. And you can see, we had the teacher winner for the trivia game of Dr. Seuss with Ms. Carbonetto, one of our long-term subs and her student. And then here's our wonderful cast of characters from left to right, Angie Edwards, then Ms. Phillips. Her husband actually made that cut out for her last night. We have Ms. Bonzer and Mita Stratton as Thing One, Thing Two, Mr. Grinch was Mr. Walters, Mr. Brown was our parent engagement specialist, Mr. Riddick, and myself. And that concludes the superintendent's report, thank you.
Great.
Yes, yes, tomorrow is my favorite day, I hate to say it, of the year, every year because it's, you know, Read Across America Day at school, so show up and read, and yes, my hair will be blue tomorrow, so.
Why is that?
It's Dr. Seuss Day.
I thought you said blue hair.
It will be blue, yes.
Should be a thing, right?
I'll be a thing tomorrow.
You'll be a thing.
I'm a thing all the time.
Miss thing.
I understand that, I'm sorry.
Yes. So yes, all right, so next up, thank you very much, Ms. Burkhalter, for that. And thank you, thank you so much for our gifts.
Yes.
All right, next up, because I know everybody's ready to go home, business by school board members. Does anyone have anything they wish to share, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, yes, yes. So I was not here at the last school board meeting because I was at a very important place, the state wrestling tournament. So just in case anyone didn't know, Franklin has an amazing wrestling program and we were able to take eight wrestlers to, actually eight plus one. So we had eight wrestlers qualify for the state wrestling tournament and one alternate, nobody scratched. So that one alternate did not get to wrestle in the state tournament, however, we did have eight wrestlers that wrestled. And five of them brought home medals, two of those five were in the finals. They did not bring home the state championship, but they did bring, they were state runners-up. So we had an amazing season. And for those of you that aren't too familiar with wrestling, because it's not the most popular sport unless you live in my house, it it's not just an individual sport, but it's a team sport as well. So you get individual medals, but you also like earn team points. And for the second time in history, Franklin High School reached number five in the state. So this, they tied for their best ever season, so they did an amazing job. And something else that I saw, we have to travel all the way to Roanoke, and it's not just for a day. Like you have to go on Thursday and you don't get home until like the wee hours of the morning, like Sunday morning, like late Saturday night, Sunday morning. But we have, we're kind of at a disadvantage because, you know, we have schools that are like within an hour, an hour and a half, that are just like wrestle, the kids come out of the womb wrestling. Like so they have all their friends and family that go to the Salem Civic Center there. It's like, you know, cheer on the wrestlers. But I was so amazed to see that parents and family of our wrestlers and some of the J V wrestlers even traveled to Roanoke to support the team this year. So it is just an amazing wrestling family that we have. And I just want to extend my congratulations to the entire staff and team, and they did an amazing job. So if you see a wrestler, then, you know, yay, go team, so. And hopefully we'll have a chance to invite them here and so that we can properly, you know.
And I just want to piggyback on what you said because what you said about our students and our families supporting the other students and staff is a recurring theme within this division. I've seen it myself with other things that go on within the division, and it's a recurring thing, a theme. You know, if there's one thing I can say about the Franklin City Public Schools community, it it, everyone really is so supportive of everyone else. And I just, I just wanted to comment on that because I I have seen that. Anything else, Ms. Johnson?
Not that I can think of, that was nice, so.
Mr. McCrue?
Yes.
And I have a list too, so.
All right.
Mine are all quick.
Ms. Moore did an excellent job with the photo I supplied her. Thank you. I I saw this meme on social media, I guess this past week or week ago. It's a quote attributed to Frederick Douglass. Says, "It's easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." And I just offered that as an encouragement to our whole division, to our principals and teachers. Just to encourage you to continue to be strong and courageous for the students that you that you teach and care for. You know, to let, everyone's aware of all the outside influences that we've had to deal with, you know, from, from the national level and the state level and right now the international level. And our children, they're aware, they may not know the details. We don't even know the details a lot, we don't even know what the, the truth is many times, you know, we search, read, read the news or listen to the news. And so if we have questions, we know that our children have questions. And so my challenge is, even though we may not have the answers, is we need to retain, you know, faith and hope and courage and so that our children, you know, convey that to our children. That so that they're secure, that they will grow up being strong children. And I think that's just Ms. Johnson shared with the wrestling team. And as the Chairwoman Phillips just stated that, you know, that just even that connection in our sports is encouraging one another. And I, I think that can, it goes in through all areas of our schools. But earlier this past year, or this past year, on the political realm, talking with a lot of people on social media, and I was noticing that the level of fear just in personal people's lives was was pretty high. And it didn't have, not just with the COVID, but politically, just across the spectrum. And I reminded them, you know, the few of the people that I was speaking with, that because they were openly stating that they were scared, and these are adults. And I had to remind them that fear is contagious, it's addictive, which is anxiety, it's also contagious. So one person in the small group can convey that fear to other people. But conversely, courage is also, can be conveyed to other people. So that's my challenge, is that even though we have so many things outside of Franklin that depresses personally and our families, that we as a community, as schools, can continue to be strong. So that's my admonition.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna pick on schools for a minute, I'm gonna pick on high school for a minute. Mr. Felton didn't know I was doing this. So Theater is going to have their spring play coming up later this month. Not quite sure on the date yet, it's looking like it could possibly be opening night, maybe on the seventeenth of this month. It may be a little bit later than that, we're not quite sure on deadline, on the date yet. But I wanted to go ahead and put that on the radar that it is coming up, so be prepared for that. Also, this Saturday, the robotics team, Blackwater Robotics sixteen-ten, has their first meet of the season. This will be their first in-person meet since literally the weekend before COVID broke. So they are very excited, there's still restrictions, they can all, they are limited on how many people they can take, there can be no spectators, there's some other restrictions. And they're being so tight on it that even if they try to sneak someone in, they will disqualify the whole team. So there there's quite a bit of restrictions, but they are competing Saturday in Colonial Heights. So just wanted to let everyone know, Mr. Felton, didn't we have something good going on with basketball? Like made it to playoffs or something? Do you mind commenting on that because I'm not quite fully versed on that one? Yeah, I don't know.
So thank you, Ms. Johnson, for highlighting our wrestling team, fifth in the state.
No problem.
That's awesome, and we definitely want to invite ourselves to a future meeting.
We would love to have you.
Basketball, they finished, let me get this right, we finished ten and ten overall, which doesn't sound that impressive, but we, the Tribe Rivers District is very tough in basketball. So that was actually a good season and they made it to the regional tournament and lost to the team that won the whole region, and we were leading them in the third quarter at their place and just kind of had a bad fourth quarter. But and I'm talking about boys' basketball right now. Girls' basketball made it to the district tournament and they had kind of a rebuilding season, but they had no seniors. So everyone is back next year and we're expecting big things from them. So we had a good basketball season and a great wrestling season.
Nice, nice. All right, and of course tomorrow, Read Across America Day at S P Morton. So I, like I said, I will be there with my blue hair, ready to go read with my props and books. So that's S P Morton. Dr. Stafford, what have, what have you got going on because I can't leave you out? I can't talk about the other two and not talk about you.
We can hear you.
We can hear you, yeah. Wonderful.
Nice.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, because we actually have some people on our staff that that played volleyball when they were in high school.
You you might want to talk to. You you might want to talk to your P E teacher. Ms. Brown. She was on volleyball team too.
All right, next up, we're gonna revisit the V S B A Business Honor Roll. As you guys may remember, we've talked about this a couple of times, we had identified two entities that we were looking at recognizing. One was Colwell Banker for their dedication to the senior class for the last couple of years and providing the banners downtown. The other, per Mr. Holt's suggestion, was Bronco Federal Credit Union because of their continued support of the schools over several years. And we can nominate up to three. So those nominations have to be turned in by April, I forget the deadline, but it's in April. So figured we'd have one last conversation. Is there anyone else, any other entity, business entity, that anyone recommends that we include? Or we, do we want to just look at the two? I'm not hearing a third, so are we gonna just stick with the two? All right, so that would be Colwell Banker and Bronco Federal Credit Union. Okay, so I will get with Ms. Moore and we will get that submitted. All right, next thing I have, we talked about that one. Sorry, I had to make my list because my brain does not last that long. The Lumberjack Festival, and we've talked about that in the past, of course, now some of that changes because they were, they were requesting or that the, the school division entertain, working with them to provide transportation for the Lumberjack Festival. Where that request came from is their thought, they're not sure how much of the downtown streets are going to be blocked off. And if parking downtown is full, then they will be looking at off-site parking all over. And if parking downtown is full, then they will be looking at off-site parking all over in the Armory Drive corridor and then needing to bus, um, those, um, festival goers to downtown. Um, so Ms. Burkhalter checked out several things for me a few weeks back, uh, we looked at that. Probably our biggest hurdle with this is going to be drivers. Because we, we only have two that do, um, those extra runs outside of the normal day. Um, so we would need to go ahead and, if this is something the board is entertaining, um, working with them on. Of course, they, you know, we're looking at cost of the drivers. We're looking at the cost of the fuel to go with it. Um, the festival is Saturday only, May seventh. And it is from nine in the morning until ten at night. Um, I want to make sure I've got my date right. Yes, Saturday, May seventh. Um, so that would be the hours, so, um, is this something the board wants the division to pursue, looking at working with them to provide transportation for this? Of course, one of the concerns had been the masking requirements from the federal level, and now that's gone. So, it would be just looking to, is this something we could do? Of course, there would have to be a memorandum of understanding. Uh, we did check into, I think I had shared that, I'm not sure, um, we did check with our liability insurance. And our liability insurance would cover, um, our drivers, our buses and any, um, riders on the bus, even though they're not students. Anyone that was a rider on the bus in the event there was an incident.
Uh, what about cleaning?
We did factor that in as well, Ms. Burke Halter looked at what those, um, what those items are that would be needed for cleaning. And I did convey that to, um, the organizers when we had that conversation, that that would be something that we would have to consider as well, because we would still have to clean the buses.
So, are we talking about paying the driver for a thirteen-hour shift? Or paying the driver only when the driver is driving? Because I'm not for that. I would want to pay the driver for a thirteen-hour shift.
I wholeheartedly agree, and I'm not even sure that we would want to put thirteen hours consecutively on one driver. It, we may have to see if two wanted to split the shift.
Which means that's
That's a lot.
Which means we need a hundred percent compliance from, or participation. If anybody is listening and wants to drive a bus, Franklin City Public Schools is hiring. Just need a CDL.
If it doesn't cost the division anything, and we're okay with insurance, et cetera, um, I, I support it. Um, you know, we appreciate the, the division appreciates the support of the community, the businesses. And so I think this is a good way for the division to reciprocate.
And, and normally, ju- just so I can clarify that, normally any facilities use request goes through the superintendent and the superintendent would make the, would be the decision holder on that. This is way outside of the norm. We've never had a request for this, and this really doesn't fall under facilities. So, that's part of why this has come to the board, because it's, it's not norm for us. Um, so this would, this would be a, a way different venture than what we've done before. And, and I agree, um, that we want to make sure that, you know, everything is documented as far as who's responsible for what. And, yeah, you know, it would be, we wouldn't want it to be cost inhibitive on the division, for one thing. We wouldn't want to absorb too much
No, well, in fact, I mean, I would say they, the organizers would have to cover all costs, uh, from my viewpoint. So, that we're, we're more or less providing the local access.
Right. So, I mean, we're, we're in Franklin, and I am hoping for an amazing turnout for them. But realistically, what is the likelihood that they're gonna be packing a school bus like when Florida Georgia Line came to the Southampton County Fair? So, like, what about those little buses that we have, that it doesn't take a CDL? When we might have like somebody else from the division that might be willing to do that? Or like, that would at least give us more personnel from whom to choose.
True.
Like, could we do that? And then maybe, like, I wouldn't imagine it would cost as much to, I don't know, but to fuel one of those, like, it would seem like that might be a better option. So, like, are they, I, I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not trying to extend the meeting, but I'm just saying that might be a better option for them.
So, maybe what we should do is pull them in.
Yeah.
Or, or have them pulled in and have a conversation between the superintendent's office and them to determine what they're thinking their expectation is with transportation need. Whether they need the, the full-size school bus or the smaller bus. Um, and also have the superintendent's office go ahead and reach out to our drivers that have said that they are willing to work those off-hours to see if they are willing to work the event. Because that's gonna be another thing, if, if they're gonna need the big yellow buses and our off, our outside of the normal routes drivers say, I really don't want that, I don't want to drive that weekend. Or if we have, for instance, a track meet. So, one of the drivers has to be dedicated to the track meet, that throws a kink in it too.
Right.
So, um, I, maybe we need to look at driver availability first for that weekend.
Right, but knowing that we, that we support it, like, i- if, if the we is like, i- if we're in support of it, then there's, they can move forward.
And really, it, I don't, it wouldn't be our job to work out the details. Our job is just to, um, authorize it to happen. And then the details would be worked out from within the division.
Great, make it happen. Time to make it happen.
So, we'll move forward with, we, the, well, let me back that up. The board is in agreement to look at being able to entertain this.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, I'm, I'm sure Ms. Burkhalter is already sitting there, and her mind is already rolling in about a thousand different directions. So, Ms. Burkhalter, we'll, we'll have some communications and, and we'll go from there. Okay? All right, so that's that, I only have one more thing, I think. Um, last thing I have, yep, one more thing. Last thing I have, as I referenced earlier, was discussion of masks. So, we know that the masking mandate for students was rescinded. So, that's op- masks optional now for students. Um, mask optional now on transportation as well. So, that only leaves two areas, um, that we still have masking requirements in place for. One is for visitors and one is for staff members. And we referenced back to the Department of Labor and Industry, um, and they actually have already, um, indicated they are repealing, but they have to go through that thirty-day wait period, that thirty-day public hearing period. So, that won't actually go into effect until middle of, middle of this month, sometime around the eighteenth or nineteenth. Many other school divisions are going ahead and taking action on that in some form or another, whether they are already going ahead and removing the masking requirement and making it mask optional for everyone. Or, um, giving their, um, division, um, leadership the ability to make those changes as changes happen. Um, I heard earlier, I don't know the validity of it, that, um, supposedly Congress was looking at meeting to, um, remove the, um, state of emergency that we have been under that held that mask provision. So, I guess we need to have conversations on those two fronts. The visitor masks and staff masks. So, I will open it up for discussion as to if anybody wants to have discussion or has any recommendations or what they feel the board, the division should do.
I would like to put forth a motion.
Okay.
Um, I move to make masks optional for both visitors and staff.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second?
What's the effective date?
That was gonna be the next thing I was gonna
Um, my effective date is immediately, because it's forthcoming and this will prevent us from having to meet again on the same topic.
May I make one suggestion?
Yes.
That I normally would impose.
No, absolutely.
Can we make it effective Monday, so that the administration has time to communicate it to the staff?
What, what day is today? Thursday?
Today is Thursday, so.
I, if
So, they would have time tomorrow to communicate it?
That makes, if, uh, sure, effective Monday. I, I would like to amend my motion to make
Masks optional?
Masks optional, um,
For everyone?
For everyone.
In the division?
In the division, effective, effective Monday. It's too late for a ni- a reverse nine-one-one to go out to everyone.
Right, right, and that was my thinking, is it give, that will give to, um, staff time to prepare and could, well, administration time to prepare and
I don't, I, I mean, I don't really know what the preparation is for, but, I mean, to not wear one, but if, if that is the will of the board, then
They have to notify, they have to be notified.
Okay, so, all right, hold on.
I don't want Mr. Phelps bombarded when he walks in the door tomorrow morning.
Okay, so, I move to make masks, masks optional for staff and visitors effective Monday.
March seventh.
March seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. So, effective already, students' masks are optional both in buildings and on transportation. And effective this coming Monday, masks will be optional for all visitors and staff within our facilities as well. Any questions? That is the last thing that I had, and I did not mean to keep y'all here so late, y'all can just be mad at me. I'm sorry, I don't like to do that to y'all.
Want some of my cake?
Important, and, and Ca- and plus Carrie wants her cake, and she's not happy about that. Um, important dates to remember, our next meeting will be, um, two weeks from today, on the seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day, where you're green.
Oh, yes.
Um, interim reports will be going out on March the eleventh. Um, my child is not gonna be happy that I know that date, um.
You have power school.
Right, um, yeah, she's already, yeah, we'll talk about that later. So, um, wellness days now, um, are not Friday, February the eleventh, it would be March eleventh and March the twenty-fifth. Um, and like I said, next meeting on, um, March the seventeenth. We're not going back to February, no, thank you, please. All right, minutes for review from our February seventeenth meeting, and that is it. Anything else?
I move to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, do I, I hear a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much, I'm sorry to have kept you guys here so late tonight, have a good evening.